Good evening. How's everybody doing? Um, go ahead. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order for March 18th, 2024. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton? Commissioner Singleton? Motion approved.
Um, go ahead. Need to get a motion um for the board to approve the minutes from February 26, 2024, and March 7, 2024.
I'll make a motion to the [inaudible]. The minutes from the meeting for February 26, 2024, which was a regular board meeting, and the meeting March 7, 2024, which was special call.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
What meeting was that?
Our regular meeting and then the special call meeting. Um, you weren't.
Yeah, for the 26, known for March 7.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have anybody signed up for public input tonight?
We do not have anyone signed up for public input.
Okay, then we'll move on to our chief financial officer, Ryan Anzana's report. Her statement of revenue expenditures in our enterprise fund, the one that called.
Good evening, Chair Lapine, members of the Commission Board. I'd like to begin tonight by providing you with an update on the general and enterprise fund financials for the period July 1, 2023 through February 29, 2024. To- total revenues for the general fund for the eight-month period were 14.9 million compared to 13.3 million this time last year. Represents an increase of approximately 1.7 million to revenues or 12.6%. Property tax revenue was the largest driver for this increase. RCRRC's overall property tax allocation did increase for fiscal year 24. Uh, in addition, on February 22, RCRRC received February tax allocation um in the amount of 9.6 million. Grant revenues are up from this time last year as we received our remaining ARPA fund reimbursements at the beginning of the fiscal year. Program revenues for the eight-month period were 536,000 compared to 595,000 this time last year. Represents approximately $59,000 decrease in revenues or 9.9%. Uh, parks and rental revenue was the largest driver for that decrease. General fund expenditures for the period were 9.4 million compared to 9.6 million this time last year. Represents approximately 1.6% decrease or $156,000. Biggest driver for the decrease uh would be supply purchases, uh capital improvement expenses, as well as salary infringement expenses. These are all down from what was incurred at the start of fiscal year 23. Uh additionally, to date, um I've discussed in the past that there has been one less pay period than fiscal year 23. Enterprise fund revenues for the current period were 698,000 compared to 672,000 this time last year. Represents approximately $25,000 increase or 3.7% increase. Largest driver for this increase was uh the increased volume of grain and range fee uh collections as well as cart rentals. Enterprise fund expenditures for this period were 614,000 compared to 666,000 this time last year. Represents approximately 7.8% decrease or $52,000. Salaries were the largest driver for the change, largely due to one less uh pay period during the current period uh compared to um fiscal year 23. Are there any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we have any old business.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to be recognized for this unfinished business. Um. I asked our. I asked our acting executive director last month at the last meeting to give me information on the rentals over at Parkland Adult Activity Center. It was rented out for a year. First Friday, it was rented out for a year. And that building over there cost $180 an hour. So that amounted to like $10,800, which I didn't see Mr. Ryan last month at the meeting. He didn't reflect in the budget that kind of money for a rental. But today I asked Mr. Um Lewis, did he have the information for me? He told me, a board member, that the HR person told him I could not have it. That's what he told me. The HR person told him I cannot add any information. Okay, I'm through with that one. I got another one. I'm finna go with two. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
This is to express my concern of certain actions that the board has been taking lately, that I am in total disagreement with these actions. Special call meetings have been called recently, and no specific information has been given to the public on the action that the board is planning to take. At the November meeting, the chair was trying to get the Meadow Lake Park and the Kaufman Road Park contracts, but the parking lots approved. I told the chairman, along with Commissioner Anderson here, we needed more information on those contracts. The contracts amounted to $434,655, which the board needed to approve. The board agreed to table the discussion of the contracts until the January meeting, hoping to have obtained an engineering report. The chair called a special call meeting on December 6th at the last minute to get the parking lot contract approved. An engineering report had not been received by the board, and the board did not wait to vote until after the engineering report was received as agreed. On January 30th, I was asked to attend a special call meeting to approve repairs on Kaufman Road Parking Lot. I said no. I still had not received any engineering reports or that, and that is why the discussion had been tabled. After carefully reviewing the contract, Richland County Recreation Commission had received only one valid bid. It was considered fair and reasonable pricing. The contract of $434,655 was awarded to AOS Specialty Contractors in Lexington County. The contract stated AOS contractors, AOS Specialty Contractors is a certified minority-owned business, women, Caucasian males, females rather, Caucasian. Let me say that again. I don't understand why they put this in the contract, but this is, I'm reading from the contract. The contract says that the contract stated AOS Specialty Contractors is a certified minority-owned business, women, Caucasian females. On March 5th, I was asked to attend another special call meeting on either March 7th or March 11th. I asked for the agenda for the meeting and the reason we needed to meet. On March 6th, I was told I'll be receiving an agenda to discuss the Jewish Community Center on March 7th. And personnel matters on March 11th. I was not in attendance at any of those meetings. I believe the board is in violation of the Freedom of Information Act. The board was meeting to discuss the purchase of the Jewish Community Center. Sale $8 million has not been divulged to the public. Today, we are supposed to approve that sale. The board has violated the Freedom of Information Act by not disclosing to the public what has been discussed during call meetings. Members of the public that want to know what the board was doing about the Jewish Community Center are completely in the dark on the basis of this meeting, and that's contrary to the law. We are supposed to follow the law with a statement of its specific purpose before having special call meetings. That is designed to keep the public abreast of what is going on. On the Richland County Recreation Commission website, there is mention of the sale and acquisition of the Jewish Community Center, Community Center to RCRRC. There was to be an attachment which was not attached. The attachment was supposed to say, well, the attachment said resolution authorizing the purchase of real property and improvements through the execution and delivery of an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property and other matters relating thereto. When you click on the link on the website, there's no attachment. The January 7th meeting. I want to give y'all a copy of this so y'all can see what I'm talking about here. Go. Go. I just gave them.
Tonight's meeting.
No.
That's what you're saying.
You got 18?
Yeah.
This is second. I got seven, no, seven. Okay. Our seventh meeting is the special call meeting today. And it says, resolute the agenda. This is, it's really not an agenda. It says Chair Lapine is scheduled to call the meeting to order, adoption of agenda, and then action. Resolution authorized the purchase of real property improvements through the execution and delivery of an agreement for the purchase and sale of real property and other matters related there too. You click on that on the website, you do not get this action. There's no discussion about this purchase to the public at all. And the public needs to know exactly what this board is doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, new business. All right, we're gonna move into new business. Um, we'll go ahead and talk about policy 50 dress code and uniform.
Good afternoon. Uh, the new uniform policy, but not the new policy, policy of 050 dress code uniform is up for revision. Uh, the staff and leadership staff and I want to come before the board to get our park and community center staff back into uniforms and look more uh professional and look and look more divine, put it like that. Uh, right now, going into some of our parks and community center, a lot of our staff is not appropriately dressed uh to be at work. I was. I'm having on crocs. Sometimes they got on slides. Sometimes they don't have on uh RCRRC shirts. Uh, you know, they got on sweatpants. So uh we're asking that the board consider revising this policy, the whole policy, where they could go back into a collared shirt, uh khaki, blue, or black pants. Uh, no crocs, no slides, closed-toe shoes. Uh, during the summer months because of summer camp, they will be allowed to wear shorts, blue-black khaki, and all the time that we could wear T-shirts, there would be RCRRC issued T-shirts for a special event. So the reason for this, once again, to ensure that uh our park staff look more professional uh when they're at work. So we asking the board to consider the revision to this policy.
All right, so.
And this is only for section B for the parks and community centers, not the entire policy.
Say that one more time.
This is only for section B. Parks and community centers is not for the entire policy. It's strictly to address the parks and community centers.
Okay.
So in other words, you want your employees to dress a certain way?
Yes, sir. We want to be more professional. As you look in the audience tonight, you see some of the staff uh with the red shirts on. Uh, they're, they're appropriately dressed. Uh, Mr. Henry, will you stand up for me, please, sir? This is what we are asking our staff to look like when they're in our parks and community centers. Look professional, look approachable, and look decent in order.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir.
Over the last three and a half months, wouldn't you say that you've probably been in the parks and community centers?
I've been in them a lot.
How many days a week on average, do you think?
Probably four.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the new dress code and uniform policy, number 050. I think it's very effective and very professional. Thank you.
We have a second?
I'll say it.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mobley? Commissioner Singleton?
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Okay, um. All right, I'm gonna uh just read all these off and let you run down the list. Uh, Mr. Lewis, request for waiver of facility fee for care jokes, homeowners association, community field day. Action on that.
Uh, at this time, I'm requesting to the board uh to table this issue until next month. Uh, Care Jokes hasn't presented all of their necessary documentation uh for, to come before you all to ask for a free waiver request. Uh, there are certain items, permits and stuff that uh some of them are collected, but not all of them has been collected. So I would not request that the board make a decision tonight. I cannot recommend that decision until we have received all the proper documentations uh for this event. Uh, once we receive all the proper documentation for this event, I will come back before the board next month and make a recommendation uh for this event.
I'd like to recommend that we table this discussion until all the paperwork is submitted.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yeah.
Motion approved. Request tabled.
Next, we have a request to waiver uh fees and facilities for town in Eastover for the Fourth Annual Barbecue uh Festival to be held at Eastover Park. Uh, I'm making the same recommendation to, for them as well. Uh, we haven't received all the proper documentation and permits. At this time, uh, I would not make a recommendation to you all to waive this request. Our staff has been in contact with the mayor today. They are working on collecting and submitting all their proper documentation and paperwork. So I asked the same thing as previous, that we table this request as well until we receive all the proper documentations and permits.
I recommend that we table this action also until we receive proper information.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yeah.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yeah.
Um.
Motion approved. Request tabled.
Yes, one thing about that, um, I know that we've had this event the last four years I've been on this board, so I would assume that they would be able to do something very similar to what they've done because it has been a very successful.
Yeah, it has been. There, uh, Mr. Thomas is working with uh the town clerk, and she assured us that they would have everything hopefully by the end of the week. I'm not against it. I just want to make sure.
I know, but when, when is the event?
It's May 3rd.
May 3rd?
Yes, sir.
So then we'd have to come back April or have a special call meeting to make sure we get that approved, I guess.
Yeah, they're working on all the permits and stuff that they need. Uh, I just think in the past, other a bunch of different parties were dealing with it every year, so we're just trying to make sure that we've been consistent and fair.
Thank you.
Uh, lastly, we have a request for uh kicking it with that. Uh, it's been recommended for a commute event for Meadow Lake Park. My recommendation is the same as the previous two. Until we receive all the proper documentation and permits, we table this until we get everything against it. You guys can make a recommendation at next month board meeting. There have been a schedule for June uh June the 8th, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, staff has met with them previously on two different occasions. Uh, we were working with them to ensure that we have, they have all the proper documentations and permits that they need. Uh, and then we can get back with you all next month, and you all can make a recommendation if you approve of the event.
Thank you. Can you table that?
I recommend that we table this request until we've received all of the information required.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine?
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mobley? Commissioner Singleton?
Yeah.
Motion approved. Request tabled.
All right, Commissioner, or uh, Mr. Director Lewis, um, we'll get into other business in your uh report, and then we'll move into Felicia to do her report.
Okay, uh, I wanted to give you guys some project updates. Uh, we present a PowerPoint so you can kind of see some of the things that we've been working on. All the recreation centers now have the new gym rule signs uh that was, that was ordered a couple of months back. Uh, the size inform our patrons about the rules and do's and don'ts into our facilities. So now all the parks uh in the recreation centers in the gym have these signs up uh in, to go in accordance with our policy procedures. Uh, next, uh, at Pine Grove Community Center, uh, we had the parking lot restripped, sealed and restripped, as you can see on the PowerPoint. Uh, the parking lot looked really nice and updated, and uh now patrons, when they come in the park, they can actually see where they're parking at. Uh, we also uh painted the front entrance yellow to ensure that we was on ADA compliance uh for our seniors to ensure that nobody have a trip hazard to the best of our ability. Next, at North Springs Park, uh, we cut down trees near the tennis court and the baseball field for more visibility at night. Uh, we had a lot of issues about safety concerns and uh uh criminal activity allegedly taking parking in parking lots. Uh, so we cleared the area out. We also added floodlights at the ball fields and the press boxes and the canteen for more lighting up there as well. Uh, so at the end of the night, patrons could feel safe walking back to their cars and when they leaving softball games and tennis matches or whatever. So uh that was an upgrade. Uh, next, at Friars Gate Park, uh, we installed new locks on the bathroom doors by the baseball complex. Uh, new soap dispensers were added in the restrooms as well, and we installed locks inside the stalls to ensure that people can have privacy when they're inside the restroom. Next, at uh Kaufman Road, as you can see, the parking lot looked really nice. The contractor finished with all the paving last week. Uh, they're currently still working on the drainage uh issues that we had engineers to look into, but the park is now back up and running, you know, to full operational hours.
Do you have the engineer's report?
No, sorry, I do not. I could get it from a procurement if you need.
Could you get me a copy of that, please?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you.
Would you like an email or a hard copy?
You can email it to me.
Yes, sir. Uh, Crane Creek Gym, I mentioned this to you all last month, but I failed to be able to show you the pictures of it. Uh, we had all the carpet removed out of the lobby area. It was mildewed and old over the last 10 or 12 years. Uh, staff replaced it with tile, tile inside the uh entrance. Uh, this will go a long way with maintaining a clean park. You're not having to replace that carpet every four or five years. Uh, it looked really nice in there. The community were really pleased with upgrades. As I stated last month, we added a TV in there as well. Uh, soccer fields, uh, fields at Polo and Ballantyne was prepped to include making field cuts, cutting the grass, installing goals for the annual tournament that was held at both sites, uh, March the 9th and 10th. Dugouts, new roofs have been installed in dugouts at the baseball field at both Eastover Park and Hopkins Park. Security cameras. Security cameras were installed last week at Eastover Park and Eastover Park Pool uh to assist us with vandalism and safety of pool staff during the summer and our park patrons uh that's out there at night. Uh, lastly, I would like to give a special acknowledgement to Ms. Henley and her property management staff. Uh, they've really uh saved us a lot of funding with, with us bringing these projects inside and having our staff to do them instead of contracting this stuff out. Uh, it's been a great help with us financially to be able to put a, she put a construction crew back together, and we are now allowing our staff to do a lot of projects that in the past, we would spend a lot of resources outside. So I want to give a special thanks to Ms. Henley and her partner.
Yes, um, I'd like to also compliment the staff on several issues that you mentioned or points, uh, one being the soccer fields. I got calls from coaches from out of the state saying that how unbelievable that Polo Road looks now, and it's been maintained by our staff. And that it takes a village to do that. Um, the same with um Friars Gate Park. I believe uh Commissioner Miller spent some time out there more than I do, but I have heard positive remarks about that. Lastly, in regards to Kaufman Road uh parking lot and. parking lot and Meadow Lake Park. As I recall, was my idea to get engineers involved because I wasn't happy with the drainage and mentioned it to our commission that we might want to have it looked at. At that time, I believe that we went back to the drawing board in a quick manner. Engineers were engaged. A report came out saying what needed to be done. We looked at it as a group and voted on it. That being said, I've also received an amazing amount of compliments on the way these parks look. And what you've done in the last three and a half months with you and your staff to me is more than it's been done in the last four years.
I'd like I'd like to piggyback for a minute to Rob when you're done.
Okay. And go ahead and say what you're going to say and then I'll finish up what I was going to say. Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
Wanted to compliment Taurus and the team for several things as well. I've had several calls as well, just pertaining to Friars Gate Park in particular about how fast the response time is and and how much everyone is appreciative of how fast things are getting taken care of and just the response. It is it's looking really nice at Friars Gate. And like Rob said, we we haven't had this kind of, I guess, engagement from from them and and some time. So I'd like to say thank you to Taurus and the entire team for the amount of time and effort and and just everything you guys doing to to maintain these parks and to and to stay in touch with with everyone about it. So thank you again for that.
Thank you so much. All right, go ahead. Michelle Lindsay.
Okay, I'm glad to see that you're having the new signs regarding the gym. But I don't know if you have on there. I think we need to put maybe a special sign saying no guns since the open carry was approved.
We have them posted at the front door.
Okay.
All facilities.
I haven't seen them, but I'm sure you come.
They're supposed to be.
So I make it a point. We need them.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And then you know, are you good? So lastly, what I want to say is that you know, I'm a pretty emotional guy when it comes to the work, you know, and and I put my I put a lot of time and effort into this commission over the last five and a half years. As I know, Commissioner Lindsay has and everybody here does. And it really has been very it's it's to me, it's a blessing. What you brought us and what our staff is doing. It's just tremendous and it really it's a heartfelt thank you once again to everything that's been done in the last four months. And in fact, I mean, I don't know if you can talk about that grant that you've got, which was just amazing that I saw tonight.
Yes, we are in the process of receiving a $448,000 grant from USTA. Ryan and his staff, Ms. Stephanie, she's a grant writer. They've been working diligently on a lot of grants for us to for lack of funding. They do a great job of finding grants. That's how we was able to get the money for Hopkins Park renovation through a grant. We have several more grants that we're in the process of obtaining. Sometimes some take longer than other, but the staff has been truly diligently and working hard and collectively together. I stand for you as the leader, but I do not take the the compliments alone. It's all us in this room and those that are not in this room. Every day they come in and do an excellent job on behalf of this commission.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you.
You know, I'm a firm believer that you let the person who's the subject matter expert do their job. You're not a micromanager. And from what I've seen and I me and you talk, you know, I appreciate the time that you tape with me and go into detail about different things. And just like I told you and I told Ryan, I'm going to always consult you guys because you're the subject matter expert. You guys are the subject matter expert. Yeah, we sit on the board. We make decisions, but you're out there on the ground. You're out there in peace. So any any recommendation or thing that you that that needs to be brought to our attention, we need to hear about. We don't want you to think that that we're not going to take what you're saying seriously because I do take stuff very seriously. Y'all know I don't say a whole lot when I'm on the board, when I'm sitting up here because I listen. You listen twice as hard as you speak. If you can get the information properly. But I want you guys to know that we you guys have our full support. When you need us, if you need something, bring it to the board's attention. Don't sit on it because we want to make these facilities get better. We want to build relationships that was destroyed. We want to reconnect with the community so that we can go to that higher echelon. But I appreciate all the hard work that you guys do because I know it's not easy working with some people. But you do it and you do it with a smile and you do it with pride. Change is hard, but change is necessary. And the changes that have been made, I only see that this this organization going higher. That's all I see. I see you guys smiling when I come through there. I see a lot of difference different things taking place. So keep up the the good work. You know, stay focused and stay in the game. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's the end of my report.
All right. I see your report. Mr. Lewis, I still would like to have a copy of the policy if you say that you can pay partial payments to rent for rentals to rent the building.
I'll get it for you.
Get that for me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Lapine, members of the board. The Gaston Black History Celebration took place on February the 29th. It featured fellowship, food storytelling, and black history poems. We had about 80 patrons in attendance and special thanks to Commissioner Lindsay and to Commissioner Hamilton for their attendance. The three-up basketball tournament took place on March the 9th at Polo Road Park. This three-on-three basketball tournament was a lot of fun and that was given by one of the surgeons. On March the 15th, patrons from the Park Lane Adult Activity Center took a trip to the African-American Museum in Charleston. Forty-five patrons attended and experienced some beautiful displays of African-American art and history. On Monday, March the 11th, three of the RCRC team members attended a USC job fair at Williams Bryce Stadium. The job fair was geared toward USC college athletes and they expressed interest in internships, summer camp jobs, and athletic positions here at RCRC. St. Patrick's Day Celebration was held on March the 16th. It was sold-out trip. Fifty people registered. The weather was excellent. The parade was estimated to have 500,000 people in attendance. Thanks to Vice Chair Lindsay for joining us. And we'd like to say thank you to Mr. Henry. He organized this trip. The participants had a great time and can't wait until next year. With our Park of the Month, we had inspections. And with those inspections, as we were told last month, the highest score that you could achieve was 60. So this particular Park of the Month, they scored 55 points. And from the 55 points, just reading from the inspection said the facility was clean, several classes were going on in the gym and in the classrooms. I can't say the name without giving it away, was actively involved with the patrons as she normally is. But want to say congratulations to Bluff Road Park. We have in attendance Mr. Henry Deveraux, who's the director, Ms. Cynthia Fleming Tyler, and Mr. Anthony Whitstone, who's the custodian. If we can get the board members to come down so we can take a picture. So we say congratulations again to Bluff Road Park staff members that are not in attendance. We want to say congratulations to Janice Johnson. She's also a staff member part-time at Bluff, Clifton Hardy, Trayvon Miller, and Devonte Wright. Now, Mr. Henry, you could only display that for 30 days. It was a hard time taking it away from Kaufman Road Park today. They didn't want me to pick it up. Well, 29 days technically, 29. With the community center for the month, again, the highest possible score being 60, this community center scored 56. The building was clean. Another staff member provided excellent customer service. The staff was always dressed professionally. The bulletin boards were displayed, properly displayed. The building was clean and had a pleasant smell. The storage closets were neat and everything was stacked neatly. So we want to say congratulations to the Gannas Ferry Adult Activity Center. Staff that's in attendance tonight is the site director, Demetri Goodwin. And we have custodial staff, Mr. Wayne Strowman in attendance. If we can get the board members to come down and take a picture. We also like to recognize Mr. Dre McCree, Ms. Estelle Coles, Ms. Terry Jordan, Ms. Myrtle Billy, Ms. Faye Jennings, and Sandra Ockerton. And this next gentleman, his chest is sticking way out. I'm surprised his head was able to make it in the building tonight. Because he had two sites that won last month, which was in January, and two sites that won tonight. So we want to say outstanding job to Ira Thomas for your leadership. Come on out and take a picture. And joining him, I would like to also acknowledge Connie Reeves for her supervision and leadership. Come on out. We have flowers for you. Just one more picture. Congratulations, Connie and Ira.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. We also wanted to just acknowledge that this competition is getting a little fierce. The parks, we had the winner had 55 points. We had two other parks that had 54. So we'll see what happens next month. All right, but again, 29 days. You have to turn that trophy back in, but congratulations to both sites. Our upcoming event, we have a senior brunch and bingo that will be held on March the 23rd at Polo Road Park. We have Eastover, we'll have an Easter egg hunt also on March the 23rd. On March the 27th, the Player of the Year Girls Basketball Banquet will be held at Seawell. On April the 6th, a adaptive recreation spring dance will take place at Danny Terrace Gym. On April the 12th, we'll have Creative Minds and Moments at Killian Park. On April the 18th, we'll have Paint and Pour at the Gannas Ferry Adult Activity Center. On April the 20th, we'll have the Eighth Annual Badminton Tournament at Turner Road Park. Also on the 20th, we'll have the Farm Festival at the Gaston Park Community Center. And on the 27th, we'll have the Sweet Potato Festival at the Hopkins Park Adult Activity Center. On the 30th, they'll have a fish fry at the Valentine Community Center. And this upcoming Saturday, March the 23rd, we'll celebrate Cotton Tail Festival at Meadow Lake Park at 10:00 a.m. And also Jazz Fest tickets are still available. You can go to Eventbrite to purchase them. All funds will all funds collected will benefit the Richland County Recreation Foundation. So this is a very worthy call. So if you haven't purchased your tickets yet, please go to Eventbrite. And this concludes my report.
I think we just go. We don't have to move. Can we just go into executives? So we just go into executive session, correct? Yep.
Yes.
So we're going to executive session.
You guys make a motion.
I don't think so. There's no action. Let's just go.
Is there an action on it?
All right.
Two actions.
I don't see it. Are we supposed to make action to go into executive session?
You need to move to go into executive session. You have the items under your agenda, so.
But usually it says right here. All right, sorry.
Make a motion.
A second.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yeah.
Commissioner Singleton.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Like to make a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
She might not be on this. She was on another room.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yeah.
Commissioner Singleton. Motion approved.
Right. There's one action to take from executive session?
You want to tell us what we're going to do about the other two actions?
No. We're just. It's where Bob says so.
You have one action item if you wanted to make the motion on that.
If we need to report on that.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. Make your motion.
I'll make a motion. We authorize submission of the letter to RCSD regarding the lease.
To clarify, that's Richland School, Richland County School District One.
Say.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Now you did a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Say.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lapine.
Yes.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley. Motion approved, meeting adjourned.